All right, on behalf of the Lackawanna City Council, I would like to welcome the members of the council, the department heads. We have our guest speaker today, Mayor Annette I Follow, and I would like to welcome the public. We would normally start our meetings with a caucus, we will do the same. However, after the pledge of allegiance, I'll invite our mayor to give her state of the city address. I would ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the United States, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mayor I Follow, are you ready to make your presentation?
I am.
On behalf of the city council, welcome mayor to our March 1st, 2021 meeting. And we appreciate your taking the time to appear with us, and you have the floor for your state of the city address. So, welcome there.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Council President, honorable city council members, Mr. City Clerk, City Department Heads, and everyone watching on Facebook Live. I'm excited to be with you, present, to present this Lackawanna State of the City Address, my second as your mayor. I'd also like to welcome Karen Gambino from Western New York Def Access Services as our sign language interpreter, and thank the friends of Annette I Follow for their funding support for this service. The accomplishments I'll present today were achieved in a world far different than anyone could have imagined. Like all municipalities, Lackawanna faced many challenges in 2020 due to COVID-19 and periods of racial, social, and political tension. Despite the decades of government work experiences among our city workforce, there was no playbook for managing these unprecedented situations. Nevertheless, we moved forward with efforts to begin rebuilding Lackawanna's economy, secure and strengthen our workforce, maintain financial stability, improve government and private sector partnerships, and deliver effective public safety and services. None of this would have been accomplished without the efforts of our city employees and support of a forward-thinking city council. Before I continue, please join me in a moment of silence, reflection, and prayer for those impacted by COVID-19, especially anyone who suffered the loss of a family member or friends. Thank you. It is now my honor to present the Lackawanna State of the City, starting with development. On August 1st, 2020, a competitive unified city tax rate of $17.15 per thousand for all properties was implemented with majority support from the city council. Implementation of this new and competitive tax structure is my administration's plan for rebuilding Lackawanna's economy, which has steadily declined since Bethlehem Steel closed in the 1980s. While the homestead and non-homestead tax structure implemented after Bethlehem's closure helped save Lackawanna, it eventually choked the economic life from our city. With a business tax rate of $42.10 per thousand, nearly two and a half times higher than other municipalities, including Buffalo, Lackawanna was often overlooked for development, and our remaining businesses have struggled. Without change, our city's future was bleak. Unifying the city tax rate was an unpopular decision with some Lackawanna homeowners. While we lowered the tax rate, homeowners pay from $18.58 to $17.15 per thousand. The first time in seven years, this rate did not increase. Nearly a third of the homeowners saw their tax bill increase due to several factors, including the implementation of a property revaluation, which resulted in city property tax assessments increasing from 75% to 100% valuation. As a homeowner whose tax bill increased, I understand and I apologize for this situation, but I ask for everyone's patience. Without a thriving business base, Lackawanna can't survive. Attracting new businesses will bring many benefits, including jobs, increased shopping, and restaurant activity, and new tax revenue that will be used to bring tax relief to homeowners in the years ahead. Today, I'm proud to say that last year, we took a significant first step towards this goal. In 2020, $74.5 million in new commercial projects were started in Lackawanna, with $60 million under construction, and $14.5 million entering the permitting process. Of this total, over $72 million is related to our partnership with New York State, Erie County, and the Erie County Industrial Development Agency to remediate and redevelop 244 acres of land on the former steel plant site, our greatest asset for attracting new businesses and jobs to Lackawanna and Erie County. This is the highest amount of private development investment made on this site since Bethlehem closed. Although there was no playbook for managing a municipality in a pandemic, our partnership plan for redeveloping this former industrial site is patterned after an established and successful model used by larger municipalities to rebuild a commercial tax base severely impacted by the loss of industry. The projects now active on the former steel plant site reflected in the $72 million figure include: TMP Technologies, the maker of Magic Eraser, is investing $22 million to build a 290,000-square-foot light manufacturing facility that will bring combined 150 existing and new jobs when the facility opens this summer. Sucro Sourcing LLC, this Florida-based international sugar distributor, is investing $21 million over three years, starting this year, to transform the old industrial structures into warehousing, packaging, distribution, and the first U.S. refinery built in 60 years. About 75 jobs will be created. Uniland Development is investing $14.5 million to build a 150,000-square-foot multi-tenant light manufacturing and warehousing facility. Construction is expected to start this summer and be completed in 18 to 24 months. Job numbers for this project will be determined based on tenants recruited to the facility. And the Steel Winds Repowering Project, this $15 million project, is a reinvestment in the existing wind turbines at the site, which were failing. Through this effort, we've preserved a revenue stream worth over $140,000 annually to Lackawanna for the next 15 years. Our thanks to New York State for their leadership of site remediation, and to the teams led by Erie County Executive Mark Polinkars, ECIDA President and CEO John Capollino, and the ECIDA Board of Directors for working with us on these projects. Other development projects for this past year include: Premium Coffee and Queen City Foods finalized construction of a $900,000 production facility at 2510 Hamburg Turnpike that will bring 40 new jobs. Hazmet Environmental Services completed construction of a new $400,000 training center at their 60 Commerce Parkway facility that resulted in 10 new jobs. And a combined $220,000 investment resulted in the renovation of a longtime convenience store at 1849 Abbott Road and 1219 Abbott Road for Flexi Brick Products, a building materials supplier. The timing and impact of the new tax revenue generated by these projects will depend on the, I'm sorry, expended completion date and any associated payment in lieu of tax agreements referred to as a pilot. Pilot agreements are necessary to complete nationally for larger development projects like those being pursued on the former steel plant site. For all projects started, we actively negotiated for the maximum immediate tax payments to Lackawanna. Each will pay taxes from day one, some at 100% of the assessed payment amount, with others on a graduated schedule. For illustration, following are the estimated city tax revenues for the new developments at the former steel plant site based on a 10-year pilot agreements. TMP is projected to generate over $170,000 in city taxes year one, starting August 1st, 2021, and approximately $1.5 million over the life of the pilot. Sucro Sourcing is projected to generate nearly $14,000 in city taxes year one, starting August 1st, 2021, $31,000 and $48,000 in years two and three, as construction phases are completed, and nearly $670,000 over the life of the pilot. And Uniland's facility is projected to generate over $4,000 in city taxes year one, starting August 1st, 2022, based on increased land value, over $28,000 in 2025, when construction is targeted for completion, and $547,000 over the life of the pilot. Our 2020 development accomplishments were not limited to commercial projects. Sunset Builders completed $515,000 in new construction of market-rate residential homes in the development on the south side of Martin Road in the Fourth Ward bordered by Michelle Drive and Love Terrace. Our Lady of Victory invested over $2.6 million to upgrade their Ridge Road facilities, efforts that will help preserve and grow a workforce exceeding 1,000 people across OLV's Human Services, Charities, and Shrine operations. And through a $900,000 downtown revitalization initiative grant, a community park is being constructed near City Hall. Upon completion this spring, the park will result in a better connection of our Ridge Road and South Park Avenue business area with thousands of annual visitors to the Botanical Gardens and South Park. Moving ahead to employee relations. In 2020, we reached an eight-year collective bargaining agreement with the Lackawanna Police Union, which provides increased wages for city police officers, offset by a limiting of some fringe benefits. We are continuing dialogue with the two remaining unions with unresolved contracts to negotiate agreements that are fair to the employees and cost-effective for the city. Last year, we also made several promotional and other appointments to fill key positions. Mark Packard was appointed permanent police chief after serving in an acting capacity following the retirement of James Michael. Patrol Officers Robert Sidron and Matthew Adams were promoted to open lieutenant positions, resulting from Chief Packard's promotion and the retirement of Christopher Lauka. And Jason Sabuda was appointed provisional complaint writer, dispatcher, following the retirement of Kevin Roswood. James Fino was promoted from acting to permanent fire chief. Lieutenant Jeffrey Gahl was promoted to captain, and firefighters Jason Sirdike and Daniel Tobin to lieutenant. Also, five new firefighters hired last January and March graduated from the Buffalo Fire Training Academy. All are working on platoon and doing an exceptional job. Michael Griffa was named city assessor following the retirement of Frank Kowsky. Scott Hayes was named permanent code enforcement officer, replacing Drew Ortega, who joined the Lackawanna Fire Department. Gene Oliveri III was named computer technician, responsible for computer security policies, maintaining servers and computers, and troubleshooting employee computer issues. Charles Clark was named public information officer, responsible for marketing, media, and public relations. Chuck brings over 35 years of senior-level experience in these areas. And we also began the process of transitioning to a new animal control for which a civil service exam will be announced. Congratulations to our newly promoted and appointed employees, and best wishes to all who retired last year after many years of service to the city of Lackawanna. Continuing with other major accomplishments for 2020. The city attorney's office played an instrumental role in all litigation, employee relations, and development matters. In addition, they worked closely with Lackawanna City Court to ensure vehicle and traffic violations were handled in a timely manner, and that the public was provided with continued due process during court appearances in compliance with COVID-19 safety protocols and executive orders. The city attorney also worked to reduce outside counsel fees by referring only highly specialized claims to outside counsel. The Controller's Office worked closely with my office and other departments to establish the 17.15 per thousand Unified City Tax Rate, which saw no increase in the $254 garbage fee. In addition, the Controller helped guide Lackawanna's financial performance and other key areas. As of July 31st, 2020, our fund balance was a stable $10 million, up over $1.9 million. Due to the pandemic and related withholding of state aid, city spending was curtailed to ensure adequate reserves. In this fiscal year, $1 million of the city's general fund balance was appropriated to meet financial obligations. The unassigned fund balance was $7.7 million. The city issued new debt totaling $275,000 for the purchase of a fire pumper truck. There are also two outstanding serial bond issues totaling over $4.5 million, extending through the 2027-2028 fiscal year. Lackawanna's bond rating from Moody's as of August 2013 is A-2, which is considered stable based on the Moody's rating scale of AAA through C. And Lackawanna has received a no designation for the year ending July 31st, 2019, and a rating of five from New York State Controller's Office. The state controller monitors the fiscal stress of a municipality on a scale of 0 to 100, with low scores indicating low stress. Lackawanna's fiscal stress for the year ending July 31st, 2020, has not been issued as yet. However, we anticipate the same no-designation score. The Lackawanna Fire and Police Departments were kept very busy during the pandemic year. The Fire Department responded to 3291 calls, up 126 over 2019. Over 70% of these calls were for emergency medical services. Fire crews responded to 103 fires, up 27 over 2019. And the fire marshal inspected nearly 200 properties while also enforcing pandemic-related orders. I'd like to recognize one of these important calls. Last December, the life of a baby girl born in a vehicle parked at a convenience store on Route 5 was saved by Lieutenant Ron Schull, firefighters Gary Wallwender, and Rebecca Sarica. Upon arrival, they found mother and child in need of assistance and acted quickly to clamp and cut the baby's cord, suction her airway, and provide stimulation, allowing her to breathe and cry. Mother and baby were taken to Mercy Hospital for further care. They are now home and doing well. Congratulations for a job well done. The Police Department responded to 12,866 calls, made 575 arrests, issued 4,259 traffic summonses, and 1,960 parking tickets. A new state-of-the-art evidence room with electronic evidence system was constructed to better manage all evidence entering the Police Department. In addition, three new police vehicles were purchased to replace high-mileage older models. Likewise, the Public Works Department maintained garbage, recycling, bulk trash, and city services despite numerous COVID-19-related pauses. In addition, several projects were completed, including a $171,000 project to convert 2,300 city streetlights to energy-efficient LED through the National Grid Streetlight Conversion Program. Lackawanna received a $162,000 rebate incentive for participation in this program, resulting in a net cost of $9,000. From this conversion, Lackawanna is projected to save $25,000 annually in energy costs, resulting in a project payback of less than one year. Milling and paving on Milnor and Keever Avenues using community development block grant funding, sewer lateral repairs on each street were included in these projects. And milling and paving on Willard Road in partnership with the Town of Hamburg, our thanks to Supervisor Jim Shaw and Highway Superintendent Ted Casey for collaborating on this project. The Assessor's Office finalized Lackawanna property revaluations for the 2020 assessment roll on March 1st, which took effect with the fiscal year starting August 1st. Since then, residential and commercial property values in the city have increased 6% due to favorable market conditions. With respect to home sales, Lackawanna performed well in comparison to the booming local market. Last year, 98 Lackawanna homes were sold through a realtor in an average of just 20 days, comparing favorably to the 37 days on-market average for the Buffalo Metro market. Of this total, 38 homes, equal to 39%, sold for more than 100% of the asking price. This data shows homebuyers have identified Lackawanna as a desirable community, given our attractively priced housing, proximity to downtown Buffalo, and nearby recreation, cultural and entertainment destinations. The Treasurer's Office generated $162,000 in revenue from the sale of eight foreclosed properties related to 2016 tax delinquencies. They also did excellent work ensuring timely collection of tax payments through greater use of Dropbox and mail payments. The Purchasing and Technology Departments worked to provide city employees with capabilities to work safely and securely from home during the pandemic. In addition, they completed projects involving phone and internet service updates at all Lackawanna firehouses, installation of FirstNet wireless access in police cars, which is a faster, more secure system for law enforcement, and implementation of an enhanced VPN and password security policies and practices. The Public Information Officer generated over 40 instances of print and broadcast media coverage for Lackawanna through new and stronger partnerships created with local media. The PIO also generated 190 social media messages, reaching a total audience exceeding 560,000 people, while also making stronger use of the official local newspaper, city website, and Code Red Call system. Like all municipalities, our recreation programs were hit hard by the pandemic, with many programs canceled. Among the few programs we ran last year were the annual Winter Fest and Mayor's Bowl Chili Cook-Off, summer adult softball and kickball leagues, and six-week summer lunch program supported by a modified recreation leader program. Based on Health Department guidance, we hope to resume most, if not all, recreation programs this year. We're also looking at possible grants and partnerships to help expand programming. In any year, this list of accomplishments would be impressive, but in a year like 2020, they're truly remarkable. Again, my thanks to all city employees for their incredible efforts this past year, and to our city council members for their support. While 2020 was a year of accomplishments, it wasn't perfect. Some things could have gone better, such as the Ridge Road Bike Lane Project. I'm not afraid to try new things in an effort to learn different ways to move our city forward. This creative pop-up project presented an opportunity to explore the feasibility of implementing a unique bike lane design. For many reasons, it didn't go as planned. However, valuable lessons were learned that will guide our future efforts to implement bike lanes in Lackawanna. Looking ahead to this year, we'll continue our efforts to rebuild Lackawanna through several projects that highlight our strong partner relationships, while also remaining mindful of ongoing challenges related to COVID-19. These projects include continuing to remediate and redevelop the former steel plant complex in partnership with New York State, Erie County, and the ECIDA, including increased marketing of the site's light manufacturing and warehousing model, along with its superior transportation infrastructure. Evaluating development of spec warehouse space on city-owned parcels on Alliance Drive and All Bike Court in the first ward to meet growing local demand. Rebuilding the Ridge Road and Center Street corridor in several phases. A full reconstruction of Center Street in partnership with the Erie County Water Authority and Erie County Sewer Department. This $1.9 million project will be funded through Consolidated Local Street and Highway Improvement Program and Community Improvement Program and Community Development Block Grant Funds, and the cooperation of our water and sewer partners to pay for their project phases. Construction of a state-of-the-art community splash park between Memorial Field and the Lackawanna Library, funded through various state and county grants. Redevelopment of a city-owned parcel at 539 Ridge Road, the former St. Barbara's Parish site, as mixed-use commercial and residential. The Splash Park and 539 Ridge Road projects were planned for 2020, but delayed by the pandemic. Renovating Veterans Stadium to include grant-funded construction of a new pavilion, synthetic ice rink, second ball diamond, volleyball courts, and horseshoe pits. We're also hoping to secure grant funding to remove the obsolete bleachers on the north side of the complex. Residential development on 100 Dona Street, the longtime site of Lincoln Annex School, which was last used by the Friendship House before being demolished in 2018 and remediated through the New York State Brownfield Cleanup Program. We also continue to plan for the relocation of City Hall to the former Knights of Columbus building at 2838 South Park Avenue, purchased by the city in 2019. The current City Hall is obsolete and beyond cost-effective repair. We're now exploring grant and other funding options with the goal of relocating in the next two years. This effort would include demolition of the current building, site remediation, and restoration of the original City Hall for continued use by the Lackawanna Police and City Court. Lastly, we're finalizing implementation of online and credit card payment capabilities for various payments, including taxes, permits, and parking tickets. Details will be announced on our city website and Facebook page within the next few months. I'm proud of what we've accomplished in 2020 and excited for what's ahead this year. As featured in an article published in Buffalo's Business First on January 29th, Lackawanna is open for business. I look forward to sharing more details on these and other projects in the months ahead. Thank you for attending today's presentation, and as always, stay safe and God bless.
Mayor, on behalf of the Lackawanna City Council, we thank you for sharing your time and your State of the City address with us this afternoon. We thank you, each and every one of us, for your leadership and for sharing your vision and outlook for our city with us. We also, as a city council, extend our congratulations and our thanks to the various department heads for their contributions to this end of making Lackawanna viable again. In addition to that, obviously, we we want to thank and welcome Karen Gambino, and thank her for her efforts in interpreting for us. She's always welcome and always professional, always does such a great job. On a side note, I don't know if many of the participants in this Zoom, especially for our, our, our home viewers, our, our public, that a congratulations is in order for our, for Mayor I Follow. Mayor, you've been named to the Buffalo Business First Power Politicians 30 List. And we would like to thank you, congratulate you on behalf of this council and behalf of the city, which is quite an accomplishment. It speaks highly of your ethics, your vision, and of your genuine contributions and, and foresight to the future of this city. Congratulations, and we thank you again for that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Congratulations.
Do those of you who don't, who aren't aware, the, the selection was made by Buffalo Business First Management and Staff. So this was an independent endeavor. It used to be, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, it used to be 250 members that were given notice and recognized, but they've pared it down to 30. And the, the most significant part of this is that they base this award and the nominations and the selection on the accomplishments of the individuals, the 30 individuals named to this honorary, honorarium. So again, Mayor, congratulations. We'd like to welcome Councilman Samansky, who is at work and has just joined our meeting. But if anyone else wishes to extend their congratulations to our mayor and thanks for making her presentation of the city address to us, we can do so now before we continue with our caucus.
Can we start over?
Just like to thank Mayor I Follow for all of her hard work in this past year, and I'm very proud to be a part of the revitalization of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Moretti.
All right.
Mr. Council President, this is Chuck Clark. Can I make a brief clarification of the Power Politicians list? So Business First continues its list of the Power 250. That is for business leaders in the community, recognized for their various accomplishments. The Power Politicians 30 List is a separate list in that same power publication. So the, the recognition is both from the private sector, business community, and the municipality and government leaders that are recognized in that list. So I just wanted to clarify that recognition on both sides.
I, I didn't realize there was any confusion, Chuck, but thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on with the agenda. We have the administrative duty of approval of the minutes and the communication with the city comptroller. We will deal with that with the regular meeting. We've addressed the State of the City address by Mayor I Follow. Item number three from the city clerk requests city council approval of the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a master contract that deals with rehabilitation of Veterans Stadium. I don't know if Director Stanton has anything to add on that, or if we have any questions. Director Stanton, anything further?
This, this one's not, this one's not, this one's being done by Public, Public Works, Fred.
Oh. Commissioner DeSantis, anything further on that?
Sorry, I was unmuted. No, that clarifies, just gonna, you know, like the mayor said in her speech, revitalized the stadium, bring, bring more opportunity for people to have their events at the stadium.
Thank you. Any members of the council have any questions on that, that agenda item? Next is item number four. Councilman Dean Moretti requests Commissioner of Deeds. That shouldn't be a problem. Communication from citizens, Daryl Glover. Per task communication request city council through access the Veterans Stadium Victory Playground for their LA Sports Club Flag Football Showcase. I believe this is annual and Brian, Director Lackso, do you have anything on that?
No, as you said, it's annual, just a continued effort to provide the LA Sports Club access to whatever they need to continue their great programs. We're happy to help them any way that we can, whenever we can.
I have one, I have one question here.
Yes.
As for the Victory Playground usage, now we roll the fields for Little League Baseball, football, our football field stadium over at a stadium. But what about Victory Playground? Because I'm assuming if that has been rolled, that might be pretty hard on kids' ankles and knees. I don't recall them using that before. I'm just concerned for their safety, whether it's going to be usable for their needs. I'm glad they don't want to tear up our field for practice, but perhaps we should do something to prepare Victory Field so that the kids can play a little more safer.
Well, Councilman Samansky, I know they utilized it for a time last year, and I don't believe there were any incidents, but that's certainly something that we can address with them and see if we can provide that service at that location as well, because that, that is a valid safety concern. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? All right. In light of that, then I would like to formally call the Lackawanna City Council March 1st, 2021 meeting to order. Mr. City Clerk, would you take the roll?
Absolutely, Mr. Council President. Just to remind everybody, everybody that this meeting is being recorded. Sorry about that. Roll call, Council Ingram.
Here.
Demansky.
Here, sorry, mute.
Moretti.
Here.
Here, Lake. And Morano.
Here.
Councilman Surtik, I believe you're muted. I don't, I don't know if you responded.
Councilman Surtik, are you here?
You gotta hit your mute button.
The bottom.
Was that?
There you go.
Better.
I'm here. I'll quit calling you, Jeff.
Real nice, Jeff. All right, and Morano.
Here.
Hope Department Heads Law.
Present.
Development.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Controller.
Here.
Recreation. Public Information.
Here.
Also here.
Hearing from citizens, as of noon today, we didn't have any emails from any citizens. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 22nd, 2021.
Morano moves to adopt the minutes of February 22nd, 2021, as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt the minutes of the February 21st, 2021 meeting is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Here, Lake.
Yes.
Rano.
Yes.
Period 5-0, Departmental Reports, number one, City Comptroller AP checklisting, number 29, dated February 18th, 2021. Need motion to receive and file Departmental Report 1.
Morano moves to receive and file Department Report Number 1.
Second, Samansky.
Motion by Morano, second by Samansky, receiving file Departmental Report 1. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Here, Lake.
Yes.
Rano.
Yes.
Period 5-0, Communications from the Mayor, number two, Mayor I Follow, request city council confirm that she will deliver the State of the City address via Zoom during the caucus of the March 1st, 2021 regular meeting. I just need a motion to receive and file.
Moves.
Okay, I've got two of you.
Second, Samansky.
Doesn't matter.
Motion by Morano, second by Samansky, receiving file. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Here, Lake.
Yes.
Rano.
Yes.
Period 5-0, Communications from Department Division Heads, number three, City Clerk, request the city council approve the attached resolution that authorizes the mayor to execute the master contract with New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation for the Veterans Stadium Rehab Project 180637.
Morano moves to file Act on Resolution.
Second, Surtik.
By Morano, second by Surtik, to receive and file Act on Resolution. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Ready. Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period 5-0, Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the master contract with New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation for the Veterans Stadium Rehab Project 180637 for the grant amount of $465,455.
That resolution is written. Second, Surtik.
Motion by Samansky, second by Surtik, to adopt resolutions written. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Here, Lake.
Yes.
Rano.
Yes.
Period 5-0, number four, City Clerk, request the city council approve Commissioner of Deeds status in the city of Lackawanna for Dean J. Moretti, term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Morano moves to approve request.
Second, Samansky.
Motion by Morano, second by Samansky, to approve request. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Here, Lake.
Yes.
Rano.
Yes.
Period 5-0, Communications from Citizens, number five, Daryl Glover Jr., President of Lackawanna Sports Club, Inc. As per the attached communication, request city council approve access to Veterans Stadium.
That's not me.
And Victory Playground for their LA Sports Club. I apologize, I thought I turned it on. For their LA Sports Club Flag Football Showcase held over the summer, they request Veterans Stadium every Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for games. They request Victory Playground every Tuesday and Thursday from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for practice from April 24th, 2021 until June 26th, 2021. Attached is a copy of our current insurance policy.
Jeff, don't answer that phone.
Morano moves to approve request.
Second, Samansky.
Motion by Morano, second by Samansky, to approve request. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Rano.
Yes.
Period 5-0, Tabled Items, we have none. Anybody have any old business?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
I, I just want to talk, Mr. Stanton, we've had some neighbors complaining over on Myrtle in front area. They've been just docking trains like they were doing behind the Martin Road tracks. But this is in the second ward side. The neighbors are going to look concerned because some people are starting to climb the trains and they're just concerned for their property. So I'm not sure which train line we can reach out to, but if they can install trains to another location around our residents' homes, the residents would greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't, thanks, Jeff. I wasn't aware.
I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure which railroad that one is. I know the main ones, but I'm not sure, because that's the third line in. I'm not sure which one that one is for or from, so.
If not, not, not online, but maybe privately, if he can text me or email me, and follow up with the, to be helpful.
You got it. Thanks, man.
Thanks.
Mr. Council President.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to bring up about the charge cards and everything being able to be used, but I, I heard the mayor say it's going to be another two or three months, so I guess we'll just have to wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Surtik. Carolyn, do you have any update on that? Maybe if you have anything more to shed, or like to shed on that?
The taxes will be another two or three months to pay online, but we're looking to go within the next few weeks for credit card payments actually in the City Hall for, for other items other than taxes.
Awesome. Like for parking tickets and that?
Yep, we're working on it.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. That brick, bridge closure on, on Warsaw and Kirby area there. Is it possible that once the weather breaks, is, could pedestrians still use that bridge? Tony, or anybody?
Yeah, we have that work session coming up on the 22nd. I believe that, that is a possibility for the spring, summer, and fall, before winter starts again. We will answer that question on the 22nd, just to get more data on the extent of damage on the bridge.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
Demansky on the second.
Ingram.
Ingram. All right, so we got a motion by Morano, second by Ingram to adjourn the meeting. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Here, Lake.
Yes.
Rano.
Yes.
Period 5-0, again, I apologize for the cell phone, folks. I don't know how I didn't turn it off, but it's off now.
Hey, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.